We have an order on that call this commission of business. Thank you for this. At this time I'll ask Mr. Jim Moore to pass out a bag of shirts and tell them what he would come back and get. Thanks, Eric.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us for life itself. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given to us, and we thank you for the health that we need to fulfill the callings that you placed on us. Lord, we pray that you would guide us with your mighty strong hand, that you would make your face to shine upon us, to save us, Lord, for your mercy's sake. And, Father, we pray that you will instruct us and teach us in the way that we should go. Guide us with your counsel and your vision. Lord, we know that you've given us governing authorities to promote peace and order and justice, and so we pray for these various county officials and ask, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and guidance and counsel. We pray for humility for them, and as they lead, that they would depend upon you. But we pray, Lord, for your grace and your mercy upon us all, and we pray for protection on all of our rescue workers, our first responders, and we look to you, Lord, for strength for them. We ask, Lord, that you would give us a confidence in the things that are good, the things that are pleasing and helpful to us to have the ability to work together in harmony. And we pray for your blessings on the citizens of Coffee County, and especially, Lord, those who can't take care of themselves and those who seek to care for them. But we pray for blessings on the poor, on our schools, on our children, who are the future of our communities and this great nation. And we pray for this agenda set before these men and women today. Give us more than assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and are here in Coffee County. Lord, we pray that you would do all of these things in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Again.
At this time I'll ask for a call of march, Eric. We'll pick the people that we believe are there. Can we in place of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all? Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Eric. Confession, you're welcome to stay or go, whichever. I know you got in front of that. You can do that if you're welcome to stay, but we certainly appreciate the thing you're bringing. And thank you for your attention, Eric. At this time I'll call for a roll call. That's time to play. One of the prayers. Thank you. At this time I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. A motion by... Vote by the president, go pick it. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, vote please. Next up on our agenda is a time for public comments. And in the old week, we have 20 minutes allotted at our commission meeting for public comments in my opinion, two things per person. Might be all of us over tonight, but tonight we were, well, now they had a public meeting fine, and we relayed that or converted to or reviewed that, and then it's going to be on the agenda here in a few moments also. At the request of Mary, that's how long the city planner, and she's here this evening, and just on the trip, I'll recognize her as she's here very briefly. You got in your package there, it's on here, a resolution on that she's been with executive information regarding a proposed zoning change in a road that's on Ball Park and Providence and Cityville and the E. D. B. So, thank you. Side of the... Thank you for the word of that right now. So, this time I'll make it up to me for a person. I don't think we have anyone else in the audience here that needs to ask any questions or comments on that, but we see them all. So, there, I'll turn to you.
Okay, thank you so much. Mary Samiayo of the senior planner for the city of Toluoma. Before you tonight in your jurisdiction in the urban border boundary is a resuming request from RS1 zoning district to the TC2 zoning district for use in general commercial. This property is in the 300 block of Flower Town Road, which is a road that directly above the Jackson Street Road, which is a arterial and a heavily traveled commercial road in our jurisdiction. Within the city of Toluoma, coverage of plan, this entire area is slated for general commercial uses. Unfortunately, part of this property is in the city of Toluoma, and the other part is in Coffee County. So, to rezon the entire property, they have to rezon the portion in the city as well as bring the portion of the county before you tonight. So, along the state lines, first Tennessee statute, the area that's within the city of Toluoma is rezoned to one of the Toluoma zoning districts. That was received final approval before the board of mayors all done last night to be rezoned from our residential district to C2. And then tonight, before you, is to rezon from your residential district to your C2 zoning district as well. Again, it's in the 300 block of Flower Town Road. Included in your packet, I've included the zoning map for the area as well as the landing stamp for the area. Again, staff found it appropriate to rezone this property to the C2 zoning district within the consideration of the Coffee County zoning code because this again is an area planned for heavy general commercial development. Flower Town Road in this area in effect serves almost as a drainage road to Jackson Street, which again is our main commercial drive or drive through our city. It went to the planning commission on February 15th, 2021 with a public hearing. There was no parties at that public comment section to speak here for or against it, and it received a unanimous positive recommendation for your approval on your side. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions? Okay, I guess the meeting here of this will conclude. I guess our public hearing for that, then we'll... Then I'll propose to that. That will occur in a few moments if we vote for that. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate you being here. Next, I'm reviewing approval of minutes of the previous meeting. You have a motion to... Oh, excuse me, any other comments? Excuse my back-up, say, any comments from the public on any other agenda? Any other public comments on any other agenda? There being none. That won't go. To the seven, review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting. You have a motion, motion by Mayor Ray said by the way, even discussion on the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. There being none, I'll vote, just vote please.
Number eight, resolutions of memorial sympathy and commendation. Adding Resolution 2021-09, resolution in honor and recognition of Basil Earl Hawke for his dedication and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. For ex-Basil Earl Hawke earned the admiration and respect of the legislative lobby of Coffee County and every citizen by serving on the Coffee County Agriculture Committee for five years from 2015 to 2020. Whereas his tenure services characterize dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. We resolved therefore that Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby convene this Basil Hawke for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. We further resolve that the family of Basil Hawke receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record unless a suborder is 13 May of 2020.
Thank you, Paul. We have a motion by President Ray to approve, any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think Commissioner Brian, of course, served on the act committee with Basil Hawke as the guy. He was also a chairman of the plan, never heard a cross word out of his mouth, and a lot of us are going to miss it.
I thought I did. At this time we have his wife and fellow members of the state areas, and we're glad that you're here. And after the vote of this, we will take into consideration. Let's vote, please. As a small farm alone, it'd be real hard. His dad's on River Farm, his dad total backwood. I have a question for the board of office. You ladies want to say anything? You're welcome, Eric. I'll put a pause to that, but thank you for your service.
Eighteen, I don't know any other... Number nine, elections, appointments, and confirmations. Nine A, counters.
You have a motion to approve? Vote by Anthony Second, by David Orr. Any discussion? Thank you, ladies. Y'all are wonderful, sir, and thank you. Appreciate the venue. Any discussion? There being none, let's vote, please.
And the eight policies and procedures committee.
A motion to add, just being compared to our policies and procedures committee, have a motion. That? Vote by Anthony Second, by David Orr, and discussion. Andy served in county well, he knows people very well, he's election commissioner, so I want to thank him for his service. He's with us, he'll be on that. So, any discussion? There being none, let's vote, please. Excuse me, if you're a little emotional, I can't vote for it, but I think our party members, despite... Without who? None of us. Thanks very much. Thank you.
And say another, there being none, regarding not ten unfinished business. This resolution is the one from, that came from legislative committee. They're either they're never, but after talking about, it's been under unfinished business. So, it's 2021-14, resolution to require the state legislature to amend TCA Code 6752505 to authorize adding Coffee County to the application of that statute in regard to its properties acquired by the county through tax sale.
Okay. There's a motion by Hillary, said by Jim, discussion. There's a bird, Chris, by the way, that's a big discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And I did mention last night at a rule call, was that talking with Commissioner, I mean, I didn't recognize her as that. He said we approved it, not he would get this still to the legislature, and like, like what it get passed this session, but it might have happened, he said, to get to it tomorrow. The one that would get passed this session. Thank you.
Eleven, new business. Eleven A, resolution 2021-10, a resolution of the Coffee County Commission amending Article 3, Section 3.100 of the Revived Zoning Regulations.
I get it. Okay, motion by David Second, by Jim. Discussion. You should have on your table a, I appreciate Kirk giving a copy of that, a article that is section 3.9, which is the board committee's rule. Have that in front of me. Thank you, Kirk. Okay, question by Commissioner Hunt. He made more comment with his sister's on the transmission.
Well, Commissioner George made the motion, so he has privilege to speak first if he wants to. We all do.
Thank you, Eric.
This is, this is concerning, I like to say, a well-meaning person in the years past, group, whatever, had it in our zone, a restriction for cell phone towers, reading tower that had to be lit at 100 feet. The FCC FAA requires lighting at 200 feet. We had an attorney, boy, probably two or three times, and BZA being where we do a special section for cell phone towers. He pointed this out, that we have a more restricted and dangerous item, which is the lit at 150. It's easy to explain. This has to do with flight, airplanes, a pilot that has lost instrumentation, is flying by the line of sight anywhere in the United States, if he sees a lit tower, he knows it's 200 feet or higher. So, if he clears that tower, he knows the height of the tower. In Coffee County, if he saw a lit tower, it could be only 100 feet. That means he would be in danger because the treetops, a lot of our treetops are 100 feet. So, this is a safety measure. We were actually being more restricted than the federal aviation administration or the Federal Communications Commission. All this stuff, we do that language, all other language remains the same, and all tower construction will coincide with the regulations.
I did present you or for, I don't know, catching that, so that's all, making that change. Any other comments? My friend.
This is for Janice, just out of curiosity. If there are towers now that have that light at 100 feet, will they be removed?
I personally have no knowledge of 100-foot tower, but I thought, I had the same thought process. I'm hoping that law enforcement, maybe Allen Mainly, anybody driving around the county, if they can spot a tower and determine its height at nighttime, they say a lit tower, I know I'm going to be paying attention, but that's a very good question. I'd give him that as a problem. So, if we do find that, it probably ought to be reported to our codes enforcement directors and if it take proper action.
Because this office does basically is, even new construction, is that correct?
Yes, from this day forward, from this day forward, actually, I don't think we've been enforcing this. This was actually passed by a behavior commission probably two years ago, and it's just now made it here. But our director or enforcement director has not been enforcing that.
Thank you. Any others?
As a question, aren't the different elevations and lights different colors?
No, I think it's red at night, white daytime, is the way, so you can say it. But the height, I don't think has any differentiation in the coverage.
No comments? Questions? Not all the vote. I heard if you want to tell you what to do, otherwise, we will. Everything else, I heard. I'm trying to keep you happy, you may be a little lazy, so make some sense.
And the eight Coffee County Schools Legend Amendment, number 141, 2025-3.
I agree, we're calling the motion. I vote.
Quick, next to those, to those if you don't know me, I'm Charles Lawson, here for schools of Coffee County Schools. I want to take a quick moment. We've had a change as financial directors over the last few months since the last time we were here in the meeting. I want to introduce April Nelson, and so she is, she is the financial director, Ms. Myers, Lisa Myers, who had been our financial director for several years, had an opportunity with a model of hers, so she did that, and we were blessed to have Ms. Nelson come and work. I'm going to try to go through a couple of things real quick on the amendments you see, and if I'm incorrect, or you ask me a question, I can answer that because I'm here for. But what you, all the amendments we're looking for, that we are requesting, it obviously zeros out. It's, we're not asking for additional money or anything like that. The whole, you're going to see the two largest things consist of a 2% increase on the DDP from January of January of this year. That was, that was mandated by legislation. That is going to our employees. It was 2% on the salary component. It was mandated, it had to be added to the salary. However, since it ends in June, and it's not guaranteed to carry forward, it is being issued to employees in the form of a bonus. That way, we're not committed to it if the state does not continue to fund that. So, that is going to be in the form of a bonus going out in May. The other item that is the largest one, as you know, we have been affected by COVID this year. Everybody has been, including many of our groups, our clubs, our sporting teams and that kind of thing. Ticket sales were down for sports. Our elementary schools couldn't have fall festival and spring quarantinals. So, there were several things that were affected. When we received federal money, I requested that we be able to help use those federal funds to help, to help some of these teams and that kind of thing. It was told I could not. However, we have been using federal funds to pay substitutes when they aren't missing for quarantines or positive cases and that kind of thing. So, we ended up with more money in our substitute funds than normal, and so what Ms. Nelson was able to do is move some of that into, through this amendment, is we are trying to basically provide a little bit of a cushion. There are young youth who have had kids that have played sports, they've been in clubs, there are, it's elementary schools. We are able to provide some of those extra funds and turn that around to provide some support for those organizations because many of our sports, our clubs, and that kind of thing have zeroed off their funds, and we would like to be able to use some of that extra money in the substitute line that is there because of federal funds and move that over into, into relief for those clubs and organizations. Yeah, the rest of the things you see are grants. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Right here.
Right, Charles. Right here.
All right, eleven, same, letter from the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury.
We do. This is a letter that was submitted to the Office of Local Government Finance pertaining to the three resolutions that are on the agenda, all of this. We plan to refund rural school bonds and the jail bonds. Total savings for the schools is about $325,000, about $2 million on the rail bonds. We do need a motion that you gave me, so we'll copy it.
Now, the motion regarding the letter, motion by... You raise your hand for the second. Party. Okay, okay, my party, said by all the prayers. Discussion on the letter from the Comptroller. Okay, any discussion? There being none, let's vote, please. Commissioner Brian, there will be a conference, one of the other, three, four, the next. Thank you. Motion, thanks.
Eleven, day, resolution 2021-11, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of Coffee County, Tennessee in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $10,400,000 in one or more series, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of the proceeds therewith, and providing the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, if any, and interest in the bonds.
And all three of these resolutions were made fairly bad. I see that motion back, which we have approved, second by the right, discussion. On the first resolution, all through public bond. No discussion, not all the vote.
I do want to mention, I think the rating called out, but I went through the rough draft and heard it, but for me, it's actually in time to be able to do your copy of it. I have, they have published on their website.
Both sides are not reaching in the letter. It mentioned 13 million, 549, 446, and the amount of resolutions totaled 13,835, 13 million, 835 last. And you might want to address that on the... It would be amount of principal, the break on the other, 13,549, 446.
That was probably because we had discussed adding some principal, the jail bonds, and as long as we don't exceed that, we...
Yeah, I believe, well, 10% deviation, long, I don't know how to use 10% deviation uses, I'm over the house.
Letter B, Resolution 2021-12. A resolution authorizing the issuance of rural hospital refunding bond to Coffee County, Tennessee in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $1,485,000 in one or more series. Making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds. Establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of the proceeds therewith and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of, of principal, of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds.
That's the second one. I mean, we have also, by, I said, right, I'd work to approve. Discussion. I believe, Senator Brown, we're talking about it, I'm saying, the taxpayer about me and that I can't, I believe, more.
Well, I could press, uh, a few areas of benefits from the refunding. The savings totaled about 1.56 million. Uh, borrowing cost, uh, in the, uh, in Mariann County, spanning any of this is about 2.14%. Uh, we create shorter maturity dates. And also, uh, I don't know if it's good or bad, uh, capacity for debt is expanding. So, uh, we do have a greater debt capacity as a result of this. And let's see, on the bond rating, it's A plus, or in, is that still?
It's double A minus.
Double A minus, okay. Well, go ahead, none of you was it.
Double A. Good report. Any other discussion? Being nervous, go please. And I appreciate these bonds being refunded, because they are taxpayers running and cutting down the bank. That'll be all, has it, forty? Thank you. For him, yes, thank you.
Eleven A, Resolution 2021-13. A resolution authorizing the issuance of rural school funding bonds of Coffee County, Tennessee in the aggregate principal amount of approximately, approximately $1,950,000 in one or more series. Making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds. Establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therewith and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds.
A motion by, uh, Robert, second by David Oring. Discussion. There being, now let's go please. Thank you. No, good roll. Well, that's. Rule, yes, thank you. Oh, plus behind you. Ready, go on.
Eleven G, Resolution 2021-15. Resolution to amend the Coffee County's own resolution, number 200639, to rezone the property map 108, parcel 022.02. S1000, Michael and Linda Sadler located on 200th block of Flower Town Road from RS1 located to residential district to C2 general commercial district.
A motion by lady, and a second by Robert Mary, and have a question by, for sure.
You wish, you are. Go ahead. This, uh, this one with other deals, uh, I've been six and a half years in the commission. And I, to my knowledge, this is the first time we've addressed this situation. Uh, I'm gonna describe this and hopefully everybody can understand it, because it is a little bit complicated. The urban growth boundary that surrounds both Manchester and Tallahoma municipalities is rural Coffee County, uh, area. So that area, when a parcel is to be rezoned, the applicant must first go to the municipality's planning commission first. Then it comes straight to us, because it is Coffee County property. Uh, so, you know, why is that? Because the urban growth boundary is an area in which municipalities, uh, predicted that they would grow into an annex. But they might not. It may always be Coffee County jurisdiction. Therefore, our zoning resolution and Tennessee Code gives us the authority to, uh, enforce our zoning resolution in the UGP. So I hope, I hope you understand that, like, you know, flashback to last month. Uh, anybody wanting a rock quarry, it must be in UGP. This would be processed, you know, and, and predictably, this could happen in our future, that we will be seeing a Tallahoma or a Manchester code enforcement officer bringing them to approval or disapproval to us. Either way, it comes to us. UGP means our planning commission is circumventing. They did not come before our planning commission. There's a problem with this, uh, rezoning. And I wish the property owners was here to tell it, you know, I always like to see property owner when they're asking to be rezoned. I haven't seen him here. I've been told he will not be here. So, uh, my first question with regards to enforcing our zoning resolution, this property lies in the 13th district, which Commissioner Wright, uh, did you get a letter from the Tallahoma Planning Commission or Tallahoma City or any representative regarding this rezoning? No. Thank you. All right, that's the first problem. And with all due respect to the, the code enforcement officer and the planning commission of Tallahoma, as I stated in my open comments, this is probably the first time we've done this. So, uh, we would give them a little latitude in that area, that you should send out letters to the commissioners of a district that has asked for interference, a special exception, or a rezoning. That's important, so the constituents and the representative in that area can communicate on what's about to transpire. All right. This, the property owner applied for a rezoning from RS1, our RS1 to our C2. So that means this property must meet all criteria of our C2 under district description. In my training, I've been told, the first thing you do before you approve any land you say is zoning district is you look and read the district description first. That tells you right away, you don't look at the list of, of permitted uses, you read the description first. So I'm gonna read out, I hate to God I didn't have 21 copies, but there's, uh, copies, if y'all can share with each other, this, our C2 district description. The C2 general commercial district is established to provide areas in which the principal use of land is devoted to general and highway commercial activities along roadways classified as arterials, as shown from the major thoroughfare plan of Coffee County. That's, that's the conundrum with us approving this in our C2. Flower Town Road is not an arterial highway. There is, and everybody knows, Tallahoma, there are commercial establishments there that grandfather. They were there before our zoning took place, as far as I know. And therefore, I can't support this zoning change. At this point in time, how, uh, I don't think I need to explain them to this team, how we react and conduct ourselves with regard to the UGP does not need to come into question in the future. And, uh, I do think that you guys can elect to do what I would, uh, characterize as selective enforcement and approve this, but I can't support it. And if there's, uh, any other questions or if anything I stand up, feel free to shoot. But I think I'm.
Ready to take it?
So with regard to Flower Town Road, the county not being arterial, I don't know, since I haven't seen the map of that, but I would suggest that if that area in Tallahoma is not considered an arterial, then it means our maps are outdated and we need to fix it. Uh, because that's certainly a growth area for city Tallahoma. Uh, as far as this being the first time that this has come here, that's baffling to me. I served on the planning commission in Tallahoma for really five years, a number of years ago. And I'm confident we had numerous approvals in both Franklin County UGP for the city Tallahoma and the Coffee County UGP. Uh, I don't, again, I don't understand why a simple shed for gentlemen wanting to expand business in our city constitutes any kind of issue for the county. And speaking as an economic developer in the city of Tallahoma, I appreciate that Park County do not stand in the way of our student drive. Thank you.
Any other questions?
May I respond?
Yes.
I think my statement was, since I've been a commissioner, this is the first time it's happened. I didn't say that never, but it is the first time this has ever happened. And, uh, I did feel like that the, uh, the enforcement, this zoning resolution has been without, uh, I just say, it's been enforced to the letter from every individual. It's business, residential. We have things in our zoning resolution that I think needs to be changed. This could be one of them. Uh, with, let's, uh, let's take, uh, Los Chupstop. Their ingress ingress had to be moved. They wanted it on the Old Hillborough Highway. And because of this barrier language, we, they had moved their ingress ingress to Wattdorf Island, which is smoothed out the traffic situation tremendously, but they wanted it on Old Hillborough Highway. So there's a reason the language is in there. And I feel like the property owners should, uh, request annexation, and that would clean this up perfectly. They should, they should go with annexation. And therefore, the city of Tallahoma would have total jurisdiction over it, and we would not have contradictory, uh, decisions that would might be, that could be used against us in the future.
Senator Bell.
I agree with Commissioner Hunt. I agree with Commissioner Hunt on that. I mean, these are our standards. We need to stick with our standards. We voted on this as far as the query was of changing the zoning. And we don't want to set a precedent down. We didn't last.
We have a discussion? And a motion, second. Senator Brown.
Mr. Mayor, we hear from the Tallahoma lady that was here previously.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot to name.
It's Mary San Diego. What specific question did you have, sir?
Would you like to respond, please?
I, I have a specific question for you, if it will help you. Can you explain whether the Tallahoma planning commission examined our code, except for the property request?
Yes, sir. They, um, the planning commission and staff understand that in the urban growth boundary versus state statute, that we go by the Tallahoma, I'm sorry, the Coffee County plan and the Coffee County, um, zoning regulations. Again, as I stated, and I believe, I'm sorry that unfortunately I don't have an ever working factor to show exhibits, that are the exhibits of the land use maps and the zoning maps in the packets. I submitted a full stack of them. Okay, thank you. Um, just for your reference, um, I understand, um, staff understands that this is obviously in Coffee County, but it's at the very edge of Coffee County, right up against, um, Tallahoma and a very densely developed commercial area of Tallahoma. So I would argue, in my professional opinion, um, again, I've been an urban planner for over 25 years, that, um, this is not a rural area. This is a developing area. It's a developing for general commercial uses. This area, um, is hit or miss up along Flower Town Road on the north side. Some of the properties are in Tallahoma, some of the properties are in County. The persons that are in Tallahoma all have commercial zoning and are all in our commercial land use category. So this is an area, as far as Tallahoma is concerned, that we're encouraging, um, commercial developments of the nature of the applicants. Unfortunately, the applicants, Mr. and Mr. Sandberg, cannot be here tonight. They, uh, had a property that, uh, succumbed to a fire last week due to an arson. Um, so they weren't able to come tonight because of going with that. But, um, I understand what the gentleman is saying. If you look at the, the letter, the law, it does say an arterial. However, you look at the context and intent, the intent is not to have general commercial uses, which are, um, heavy in nature and have a lot of traffic in, in a large belt environment, in rural areas of the county. However, I would argue that, um, Flower Town Road, as I testified to earlier, almost starts as a friendage road to Jackson Street. Jackson Street has a large swath of commercial development on either side of it that goes back several hundred feet. So I would say this is not an instance where you are putting a commercial use of a local road in a rural part of the county. Are there any questions for me?
You have a question, Sarah?
Or certifications?
Is there a reason why they don't want to go ahead and, uh, and have this annexed?
Um, I spoke with them and I asked them if they wanted to annex per Florida, uh, Florida. Per Tennessee statute, um, annexations are voluntary, so the city cannot require them to annex. They just didn't, they didn't want to go through the cause and the hassle of annexing. They were perfectly happy staying in Coffee County. Yes, sir?
My question is.
I'm sorry.
My question is related to intended use, what is the purpose of the zoning change?
The intended use, the property owners currently have, um, Houston Arburus, so they currently have a tree slash, uh, landscaping business that they are running out of their house and their business has expanded to the point where they need to go take that next business step to a whole commercial property. They own this property already, um, so they wanted to, we zone the property to a commercial district to expand their business, to, um, set up a, a large whole barn for their, their landscaping business. However, I will note, um, that that's a specific property owner's intent, but when you rezone property to the CT zoning district, they could, theoretically, do any allowable use in the CT zoning district. Also, we're not, I just want to caution you, we're not approving that specific use. They have a legal right to do that as CT use. They're approved.
Ready, go on.
Yes, uh, go on. Does Tallahoma see any benefit in this at all? I mean, if, uh, the guy's collecting sales tax for his services, Coffee County don't get it, you know, Tallahoma is not getting anything. I would, I really think annexation is answered, but I would like to remind everybody that I've said enough. Remember, when you rezone Coffee, oh, I just read the description of a C2 district. In our zoning resolution is, there is 21 permitted uses. There are, there are nine conditional uses. Uh, there are extensive impact facilities, immediate impact facilities, or so many many uses that can go there once it's rezoned. And that's one thing that we've been taught. Once you rezone Coffee, all permitted uses can go there. You can't stop anything. So I, I'm really perplexed as to why the applicant chose C2 and not our C1, which is a little more restrictive. And, uh, that's, that's basically all I've got to say. I just, I can't support it.
Any other comments? Questions? Not, I'll call the vote.
We are, we'll call the vote, probably Tallahoma first.
Again, go, call the vote with Tallahoma first, starting with Mr. Milton.
Me?
Yes. Tallahoma starting with you.
Who else started with me?
Sorry, saving?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Bell.
No.
Pardon. George? Pardon, yes.
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
All of them, no?
Turner? Jim? Magic? London?
No.
Miss?
No.
Pardon? Let me ask you something. May I let me ask you something?
11 H. Resolution 2021-16. Resolution by the Board of Coffee County Commissioners of Coffee County, Tennessee, to convey subject to right of reverter the Coffee County Vocational Education Building located at 1200 Oakdale Street, Manchester, Tennessee to South Central Human Resources Agency.
Is this the motion, the second, or is that the last? Motion by David. Or is that the last? This is a second by Martin. Discussion. If this money, I may even comment on that. That was submitted to the planning commission last week. That was intended to review. Martin, has there been comment on that?
That, this came before the first thing commissioned, South Central Human Resources Agency remodeled as a county building that's on Oakdale Street over there near the radio station. They remodeled that five years ago, got into a lease with the county and they were paying us $500 a night for rent for that and had a really impressive head care, head start up there. So, the city of Manchester donated the building and the parking lot that's immediately next to it because they have plans to start an early head start here, which would be sounds like a pre-year kind of head start there for early kids. And so, they wanted, since they put up in so much money for the air out of maintenance and that sort of stuff over the last five years, they wanted the county to convey that money to there. That was a very old building. It would have required a lot of maintenance had they not leased the building and put in a $300,000 back five years ago. So, fast forward to now, they're wanting to, they asked the county if we would give them the building. The resolution says it's a reversion clause, so in the event that they are not in start business anymore or some other entity that does the same thing, then the building will come back to the county. And so, the director for the South Central Human Resources Agency for this region was here to make that request and was very complimentary about the program, what's going on in the area. Any questions?
I bet the South Central Bank got a grant and I think it's about to be a new building that's going to be a showcase. And I appreciate them. So, federal ones, I think.
Have we not gotten into these before where it doesn't revert back to us and it's still lost things? That's just my concern. I'm sure they're just repeating what we've already done and it's failed.
Well, that's because people think G-Bo right there when they should have. So, you know, the best we can do is make a, you know, make a resolution and stand by that. I mean, it's certainly one of them, but we're trying to avoid that. And if you're still using the reversion clauses in there.
Not it. Go please. The building is close to completion. It may be something to say.
They're coming in, they're new business. But reports, the meetings, the meeting, budget finances.
Our next regular meeting, budget finances, the 20th. And in that meeting, that should conclude hearing all requests in regard to budget offices and departments. So, anyone that has a request or presentation in regard to budget finance would need to be at that meeting. So, we should, Mary Ann has left, but we'll talk to her. Hopefully, she'll have a preliminary budget put together pretty soon. Hopefully, after the meeting on the 20th, throw out the preliminary budget, start working with it. So, I want your guidance to come and attend the meeting if you're not here.
Let's slide into meeting.
Let's slide into meeting again on April 25th in Southfield.
HWR?
Southern Recreation will meet on the fourth Tuesday of which month of October.
How about course, Matt?
We had a meeting last Thursday. The only thing, which is the same thing to report is we are short of deputies due to the pay of the, you know, I think, recent updates.
How is that mistaken?
We have a meeting on that. Any, any announcements?
Just get the capital out. I would ask Brother Mary's, if they could say to her, I would put her place and I would make her pay for it.
Thank you, sir. A representative from the Saturday Market that occurs in Manchester or Alton Square in the summertime on Saturdays was there meeting approval from the, to post he's a damn, that we, Alton Square in Manchester.
All right. Just for those information, on the 5th of May, Saturday, we could be with Vietnam. Veterans, more than, African immigrants. It's pretty open for the public. We did do it last year. It was sponsored by the African American Veterans Association. Guest speaker, guest partner, along with panel of listeners here live in Vietnam. Bill Robinson, British Foreign Secretary for the meeting. Last two years, we only had about six to seven. I encourage your permission to come out on the day to support that tax program. I think we'll come down.
I actually did a little walk by eight in the morning. I started to walk by eight in the morning and it was very loud.
Two o'clock.
That'd be, that'd be a good truck to start on.
Anyone else have?
If you or anyone, you know, have children, Tallahoma City is doing the D-Admonation celebration on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the park for the lambs, livers, all that. So, come on out and enjoy being on high.
Thank you. Any other statements or announcements?
I got one. To further confusion regarding this planning with UGB stuff, conversely, if there's a subdivision being built in the UGB, we approve it, but we have to approve it using the municipalities. You know, it's the fact office. I always wondered, it's sort of crazy how this stuff here. I just thought I'd let y'all in on that little conflict.
Anyone else? Sorry, vote, vote please. Now, all of that vote for the current. Vote for the second, last, and third. All of them. All right. Now, all get up.